And we're gonna have public comment by Joe Demore on Town Government Study Committee. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
And if everyone could mute your lines, there's no background noise, please.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your your time this evening. I'm gonna make the best use of time by kind of blitzing through a few items. We're we're getting close to the end in terms of completing our work. And in terms of a draft document. And again, the idea here is that we want to be able to hopefully be positioned to make a formal presentation directly to the Board of Selectmen, probably at the first meeting of March. I think we're on on pace for that. Our next meeting is February 16th. And what we've been doing up to this point is in the last several weeks, we've been collecting information from town department heads. And also, we had a recommendation suggestion by the interim director, Kevin. Just very recently, we also picked up a little bit of information from some public members. But we 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 took the time to go through the 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 recommendations that were being made, the suggestions for edits. And we're hoping to continue with that work and hopefully wrap things up by the 16th, or pretty close to the 16th. Phase one was to go to the town department heads. Phase two was to go to the public and other members of of our town government, including the chairs. And the funny thing is that we haven't asked the Board of Selectmen to chime in yet. We haven't rolled out the document to you for comment yet. And we consider that to be the last phase. So and then after that, you know, we can certainly discuss the possibilities of moving forward to present our proposal to town meeting this year. So without further ado, what I wanted to do here is to provide a little bit of comment because along the way, we've picked up some things. And I think it's just easier and in the interest of time for you to literally read along with me. So the committee's charge doesn't really allow us to recommend specifically policy changes. So for example, there's been some policy considerations or policy considerations have been suggested regarding the separate positions or support positions, for example, like an independent treasurer. These are, we feel that the the committee feels that the policy considerations are really outside the scope of our work. And so we have largely not responded to them in the formulation of our draft document. We've not responded to some comments that require a Board of Selectmen policy response. The focus of the committee really is to essentially codify what was created by a Board of Selectmen vote with our previous finance director. We want to codify, we want to formalize it. And we think that that is the best approach. The current arrangement that was voted by the BO, by the Board of Selectmen with Denise, with our previous finance director, seems to be where we're landing. Like, what was created by that? That vote and how are things being managed? The second part is we're modeling, we try, well, hopefully, we're modeling the town administrator and finance practices of other municipalities based on acceptable standards. So there's seven points I want to bring out. And then a second piece that I'm going to share with you, the new bylaw. Keep in mind that one of the, there's two general approaches, actually three, but there's two approaches that we looked at. And how we can create the town administrator position in our town. One of them is to use a special act, which is what we did. That was the approach we took for the converting our board or developing our board from a three member team to a five member team. And then there's a a local bylaw approach. And the new bylaw will transfer the finance director duties to the town administrator. That's that's what we we hope to do. The the town administrator will also act as the chief procurement officer and a personnel director. You keep in mind those are, that's what we, what I mean by codifying. You've actually done that. We, when when the Board of Selectmen voted to have the previous finance director assume additional duties, that's essentially what what you've created. The town administrator, which is finance director or director, will supervise an assistant collector and a treasurer. The section six of the finance bylaw allows that. Keep in mind that this bylaw that we hope to create and pass at town meeting does not void or delete or terminate or change any existing bylaws. The town administrator, just like the finance director today, and I believe also the interim director today, basically is relying on three documents that already exist. The finance bylaw, the personnel bylaw, and the personnel procedures manual. We're not doing away with those. We're not suggesting that we do away with those. But the bylaw to create the town administrator will rest upon duties that are fulfilled based on those other existing bylaws. So I'll read this out here for you. The town administrator's role is not all encompassing, particularly because there are areas that are under the provisions of other structures and bylaws. The clearest example is the police department and the fire department, where respective chiefs are in charge of personnel and substantially in control of operations and negotiations in the event of disputes and personnel matters. So there was some concern saying, you know, maybe this position is overwhelming. It's, you know, we don't want to create a small dictatorship in our town. Well, keep in mind, it's not an all encompassing role. It's basically a type of role that fills in in areas that are not already covered. Their authorities. Additionally, our town meeting form of government provides substantial delegated and important duties. So for example, we have a town planner, we have building inspector, we have planning board, zoning board, conservation committee. These provide pretty significant direct services and also quasi judicial processes to the public. So our work is not predicated towards, you know, creating this this authority in our town that is not attainable or is not sustainable in that case. So all these provide independent avenues. For example, for grant acquisition and various other autonomous controls that require no intervention by the TA. So the TA will not have his or her hands in everything because we already have other structures, other authorities, other boards, other commissions, other positions, a fire chief, police chief, town planner, that are handling, you know, significant aspects of our government. The next item, there's seven. A major item introduced in the departmental input. When we were getting comments from the department was the concern, the suggestion that the proposed structure may potentially expose the town to potential fraud. We've considered this, and here are our conclusions as a committee. Entire structure of our government is really replete with checks and balances and shared responsibilities. An example is the TA cannot hire or fire anyone in the finance department without consent of the Board of Selectmen. There's also substantial body of responsibilities that are allocated to specific lines of authority, such as I've shared earlier, some shared and some not. The assistant treasurer, the finance committee, the third party auditing firm, these are all structures that help us with, you know, making sure that we're not prone to fraud. If anybody wants to commit a crime and they're very, you know, very committed, I suppose they could. But we've got some procedures and controls in place. We have an annual audit. That annual audit, by the way, is not required. We chose as a, as a, as a, as a town to have it the 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 audit done annually. I believe that it it is optional in certain cases. The finance committee also provides an oversight function. Number six, the TA position, the town administrator position that we're proposing, it's something that's common throughout Massachusetts with most of them created by special legislation. We've decided to do the bylaw, bylaw route first prior to special legislation. And we feel that that is the best approach so that we can maybe work the bugs out of this. You know, develop the position well, hire to it well. And then if any changes need to be made, we can do it a little bit easier as a local bylaw by amending the bylaw versus that if we just, you know, create this position right from the onset with a special act. And it creates less flexibility for us to make changes. So the proposed bylaw is proposed requires the bonding of, again, the 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 issue of potential fraud or exposure to fraud. The proposed bylaw, as proposed in our document, requires the bonding of the town administrator will inevitably be reviewed by the bonding company's council to determine if there's need to be added, if there if there needs to be added safeguards. Our committee's proposal will be to implement the TA by bylaw first. I'm being repetitive here, but again, I want to stress that. And then at some point in the future, pursue special legislation. All these steps, of course, must be approved at town meeting. It bears repeating that the concern regarding fraud is also addressed with the requirement that the TA cannot fire, hire anyone. Again, I'm being repetitive, at will, as previously mentioned. Approval by the Board of Selectmen is essential. Importantly, every year, we undergo a rigorous audit. If there are weaknesses in our finance bylaws, remember, we're not doing away with the finance bylaws. So if there were weaknesses in the bylaws and how we, you know, in terms of controls, I I think this would have been discovered years ago in some audit. It's important to first examine current financial procedures and therefore improve them. And if necessary, to help protect our town further in this area. For example, one of the things that we talked about is to implement a separate financial controls procedure manual to further strengthen our systems and oversight. And perhaps could be a project with, when the position is fulfilled. Lastly, and this is important, the finance director's position in our, in our, our view of our committee, the finance director's position does not have to be terminated formally by specialized legislation prior to implementing the town administrator bylaw. During the interim period of initial implementation of the town administrator, town administrator bylaw and fulfillment, the duties will be simply transferred. The duties are not materially changed because they already exist in the finance bylaws. Shifting their fulfillment to the new town administrator will be permissible. We should look for town council, of course, to confirm this as well. And we are confident that our committee's assertion here is correct. Most importantly, I remember going to the state house after we had a bill that was sponsored by local legislators and going to the state house and 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 making the proposal for the, for the, changing our, our Board of Selectmen from three to five. We can do two things. At some point in the future, when the town is comfortable and town meeting is willing to now codify the town administrator position, perhaps with some bugs worked out of it after 12 months or 18 months or longer, we can approach the state and ask them to do two things. Terminate the finance director position and then implement the town administrator position. So in the interim, the duties will be transferred from the finance director and then simply be fulfilled by the town administrator. At some point in the future, we go to the state and say, okay, we figured this out. We're comfortable. We want to make this permanent. We've been dating this idea for a year, year and a half. Now we want to make it permanent. We want a special act, which basically becomes law, signed by the the governor ultimately. Want to read this to you as well. Under our current finance director bylaw, the finance director is responsible for the legal duties of treasurer and collector. The town accountant is part of the department, but is a separate position. Under the proposed bylaw, the town administrator assumes duties outlined in the current finance department bylaw. The TA will exercise responsibilities of treasurer and collector. This is not, we're not departing from what we're doing here. There are much at all, if 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 anything at all. There still will be a separate position of town accountant who will report to the town administrator. The proposed bylaw enables the town administrator to exercise the powers of the finance director as they currently exist in the finance department bylaw. The position assistant treasurer and assistant collector can or will still exist. So it really becomes a policy issue if you want to have a full time treasurer or assistant treasurer, assistant or non assistant. That's really more of a policy. But we feel that the bylaw, the way we're proposing it at this point, there might be some changes. We have a February 16th meeting coming up. It is absolutely doable. The goal is to pass the bylaw creating the town administrator. Have that person in the short term also be appointed finance director. At a future time, we will amend the finance department by special acts legislation to eliminate the finance director position, but essentially keep the finance department bylaw. Remember, our bylaw does not delete, materially change, or terminate any existing bylaws. Our bylaw for town administrator to fulfill the position substantially will be supported by or related to three documents that already exist. Finance bylaw, the personnel bylaw, and the personnel procedures manual. As to safeguards on fraud, two dash thirty six A three five allows the person who operates as the director of finance, whether that's a finance director or town administrator, to disperse town funds. In other words, write checks only after approval of warrants approved by the selectmen and the town accountant. Therefore, I did some math. It looks like we need about six people who must review and approve a dispersment prior to any check being written. This is probably a greater check and balance that exists in most private corporations. I'm editorializing a little bit here. Finally, with no further action, the BOS could immediately assign pursuant to two dash thirty six A, section seven of the finance director bylaw, all the duties outlined in section two, four, and five, and the appendix of our proposed bylaw to the director of finance and instantly have a finance director who exercise without title all the responsibilities of a town administrator. So this is a little bit of a, kind of a composite sketch of responding to some significant contributions made by town department heads and some administrators and also some concerns that were expressed. And we have, actually, Kevin, you know, project this. Kevin provided us with a comment, and I wanted to allocate here. This is the level of, the quality of of comments that we've received from multiple parties. I won't go into details here, but here Kevin is making very detailed suggestions about deleting paragraph one, section three of the TA. And if this is all accomplished, you will have created a new bylaw establishing the office of town administrator. We didn't get to this, Kevin, because we we received this in between meetings, the last meeting and now February 16th. So this is going to be one of our discussion items. And this may materially impact, or may not, or may slightly impact the, our final product, if you will. But ultimately, the Board of Selectmen, I I think you understand that ultimately, whatever we create, even if you love it exactly the way we created, or you don't send it back for further work or modification. Ultimately, before we can present anything to the town meeting, we, I would suggest that we get a a good opinion from town council. You know, as to what we've created is 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 a workable solution to meet your goal of a town administrator. So so thank you for your time. Sorry, it's a little longer than normal, but want to make sure I get through all that detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. We're not gonna have any comment on that at this point. That was more for informative information. But thank you. I guess you can drop off unless you want to watch more of the meeting. I know you've already participated in a number of these in your time on the board. So I don't know why you would want to do that, but it's up to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna chime out from here and actually get on a call with a client. So thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it.
All right.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the approval of the warrants. I don't know, Bill, did you get your audio working? Hello, Bill can hear me, maybe not. Kathy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
All right. Do you want to read the, or read the warrants anyways?
Yes, I'll do that. So move for approval of payroll warrant twenty one dash thirty one for one hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty six dollars and forty four cents.
All right, everyone's got to unmute themselves. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ed Watson. All those in favor will roll call. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Mike? Yes. Bill? Bill can't hear us. He has no audio. Jason, you're on phone call still? Maybe not. We have three of us anyways. All those in favor?
Yeah, I already said yes.
All right, three to, to no votes or to abstain votes because they're audio problems. Next up, Kathy?
Okay, do you, do we have captions on this? Can you turn the captions on for people that can't hear? I don't use this that much. I don't know.
Bill is connecting to audio now.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go ahead then.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
We have three of us, so we have a quorum, so we can, we can move forward.
All right, I'll move for approval of bill warrant twenty one dash thirty one in the amount of six hundred and sixty eight thousand, one hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty seven cents. And it's broken down as town, two hundred and twenty five thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty six cents. I always stumble at water store, fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy two dollars and fifty four cents. Payroll withholding, forty five thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty eight cents. Light bills, three hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty six cents. And grants, two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty six dollars and ninety three cents.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ed Watson. All those in favor will roll call. Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bill, you have audio?
Ed, no.
Yeah, you do.
On the phone.
Yep. So is that a yes?
Yep.
Bill, Neil, yes, I think Jason might have dropped, so that's a majority. Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to approval admitted from Board of Selectmen meeting, October nineteenth, twenty twenty. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I'll move for passage. They look to be in order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, all those in favor. Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed? Ed, is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes. Bill?
Yeah. Yep.
And again, I think Jason is on, on the road somewhere, so that's a majority. Next up, we have reapproval of the minutes from Board of Selectmen meeting, December twenty first, twenty twenty, amending the tax rate that was entered incorrectly. So a tax rate from fifteen dollars and seventy two cents to fourteen dollars and seventy two cents.
I'll move for approval.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ed Watson. All in favor. Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bill? I think Bill's having computer problems. There's a majority anyways. Thank you. Bill? No, okay. Next up, we have a rule, approval of executive session minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty. No motion?
I wrote them, so I feel someone else should move it, you know.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that that we accept those written.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great.
I just didn't want to move it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor. Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Bill, Ed?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And Bill is, Bill, do you move for passage on executive session minutes?
Yes.
Great, okay. That is a majority. Next up, we have appointments. Rebecca Oldham, town planner to director of economic development, planning, and conservation department. Anybody have a comment on that or just want to move for passage? And we can discuss it. Does any discussion points?
I'll move for passage on that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Any further discussion, Kathy?
Um, I guess I read up on it. I see that, um, the census that our bylaw doesn't prohibit this and that the departments affected are all in favor of this, right? So I would just say, subject to the town attorney taking a look at it and making sure that we didn't miss something, you know. Normally, they would, this would be on annual time anymore, and the town attorney would look at it. I just don't know if that's happened.
Kevin?
Included last week in the package that requested the creation of the department was a formal written opinion by town council.
Oh, and last week? Let me look.
Indicating that the formation of the department and of the position met with his, in his opinion, was consistent with statute and general bylaw. So he's already written that opinion.
Okay, I'm just looking for it because what, is that the one with the lots of minutes and the Verizon thing in it too? So there was a lot that you just got lost in the, in the mess. Where is this town attorney letter?
It was in the package for the selectmen's meeting at your last meeting.
Yes.
For the agenda item that requested the creation of the department. There was a memo from the town planner. There was a memo from the town attorney. There was a memo from myself, a letter from the Conservation Commission Chairman.
So I'm asking where?
Planning Board Chairman.
Where is it in the order of things here? Obviously, after the minutes, I just want to see it one more time.
It's not in the package this week. It's already been voted by the board two weeks ago.
Kevin, I'm looking at last week's packet. It's on my, my iPad. So that, I'm just asking to just take a quick peek at it. That's all. Maybe I don't have.
It was at, it was at the back, after the first two or three pages, listing the agenda items. There was, in order of the way they appear on the agenda, a number of additional items explaining various provisions in the agenda. One of those was the creation of this department. And there were five or six different pieces of material in support. And one of those was the town council opinion.
Okay, I'm still looking. So it's before the Verizon thing, because I don't.
Kathy, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I'll just take a minute to look for it. I should be able to find it.
Okay, anybody else have any questions while Kathy's looking for that? Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I mean, we hashed this out pretty, pretty, pretty well last week.
Yeah. Ed, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, pretty, seems pretty well straightforward.
Yeah, I think Rebecca's done all the due diligence on this. And then Kevin did the backup of all that due diligence, Kathy, so I don't have any issues with it at all.
Okay, I just don't. Was it possible that that wasn't in the packet that was sent to me?
No, I remember glancing it over too. So that's why I don't think the three of us have any issue with it.
Yeah, I saw Kevin's letter. I just don't see, I don't know. This is. I just, I have the draft. You know what it is? I don't have the final. So it was probably included in the final that was not emailed out. That's why. Okay, so I would just, I would say, if you guys are okay with it, I would just like to have the final agenda sent to me so I have a record of it. Because I don't have those letters in my email.
I'll see if I still have it. I'll forward it over.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I just don't get, I didn't get that.
All right, so I think we've had enough discussion. Does someone want to make a motion on that?
We already did. For, we needed more, and we seconded it for our discussion purposes, so just move.
Right. Sorry, I got, I got eight computers here, my phone and a, and a notebook. So, all right, all in favor, roll call. Mike? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Great. All right, moving on. I'm gonna jump around a bit here because I want to get to the fire chief because I think that's gonna be a quick kind of item. So Chief Valentine, I'm gonna jump over to you. Fire, so under discussion and possible boat, fire department FEMA grant for seven thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars for COVID relief equipment and PPE. Are you unmuted?
Just unmuted, yes.
Great. Any, any kind of quick background on this for us?
Yeah, they had had the initial round for COVID funding that we did not get involved in. And after I had looked at it, I said, we should have. And when the second round came out, we applied for it for the seventy two hundred dollars. We, it's a hundred percent funding. There's no share. So I put in for it for the seventy two hundred and twenty six dollars. So I put in for it for the seventy-two hundred and twenty-six dollars to cover some more PPE, because we're starting to get low.
Right. So there's no catch for this, right? This is a grant that we don't have to repay, which is fantastic. Anybody have any questions for Chief Valentine? Kathy?
I was just wondering, um, as far as the protocol, once everybody has been vaccinated in the fire department. Wh- what do you think are the requirements for PPE? Are you still gonna follow the same? Requirements as before, or are they different because everybody's been vaccinated?
No, they're gonna continue to stay the same, because we're not a hundred percent sure how long the vaccination's gonna last. And until we get the scientific proof, we're gonna continue with the same protocols.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ed, quick question.
Bill, Bill, go ahead, yeah?
Um, did, uh, Chief, do you have, um, specific items you're going to purchase with this seventy-two?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be more surgical gowns, gloves, N ninety-five masks. Goggles, face shields. And then we need to get some cleaning supplies to clean some of the equipment that we use at call, like BP cops and stethoscopes, so when we come back, we need to sanitize everything. So we're gonna be getting some cleaning supplies also.
Anything else, Bill?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Ed, any questions for us, Chief?
Um. No, I don't have any questions. I think we ought to congratulate him.
Break it up, Ed. One more time?
I, I think we ought to congratulate him for going after the grant. Uh, it was a job well done.
Agreed. Um, yeah, uh, Chief Valentine, that's great, you know, anytime we can get some money to, to help with COVID relief and equipment and PPE, that's, that's a no-brainer, so. Uh, someone wanna make a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion that, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'll second you. Go ahead.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we allow Chief Valentine to move forward with the FEMA grant for seventy-two hundred and twenty-six dollars for COVID relief equipment and PPE.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. I think we had further discussion. We'll put it to a vote. Mike, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, Ed?
Yes.
Bill?
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate your help.
Alright, thank you.
Alright.
Good job. Find some more money.
Yeah, go find some more money. Um, so let's move over to, oh, Kathy, I sent you that email on the, um, info from town council.
Thank you.
Uh, so let's move over to COVID discussion. Let's turn it over to Deb, the update on COVID.
Okay, so we have forty-six active cases. Um, I receive, you know, we had a meeting this week about, well, this weekend. Um, about the consortium, so I just received an email that we have been, um, granted access or gonna be part of the clinic.
Right.
Yep, every, I, you should probably have emails too, but I just saw that as I was in this meeting. Um, we also received a grant from, uh, I guess from DPH for three thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, ninety-five cents. Towards our COVID nineteen, so that'll go towards the extra hours for our contact tracers. Um, public health nurse and also for our administrative assistant.
Alright, so forty-six active cases, and now that eight town. Um, grouping is now gonna be nine town grouping, including us.
Mm-hmm. I didn't read the entire email. I just read the first sentence that we were approved, and then I'll read it after the meeting.
Um.
Kevin has a question.
Hold on one second, Kevin. I'm gonna read the email. All, I'm very pleased to report that Grovan has been accepted into the vaccine clinic. Further details to follow. Chief Birkenbush will be sending us a link for people to register for the clinic, and we can do a press release tomorrow, blah, blah, blah. So what this means is that we have to come up with, uh, several levels of volunteers. Uh, professional volunteers, people that can actually put shots in arms, as well as people who can direct people where to go and answer questions, um, at this clinic, so. We're gonna need to have people, uh, step up. Myself, I'll volunteer to do whatever I can. Um, nobody wants me to put a shot in their arm. Uh, but I can definitely tell people where to go, uh, and direct people, so I'm gonna do that. Uh, Kevin, you have a question? I'm sorry, Kevin?
Yeah, just a suggestion, Deb. Um, you'd mentioned the grant money for, uh, contact tracing, the public health nurse and, um. And, uh, Lois's hours, uh, just a suggestion, because the contact tracers and the hours of the public health nurse attributable. To COVID are all covered by the CARES Act money. I'd suggest you consider using this grant strictly for Lois's extra hours. Because those might be difficult to fund with CARES money. And then, because there probably will be more than what you need strictly for Lois, save the balance of it for, uh, additional expenses that may come along during the clinics and things like that. If that makes sense to you.
Um, I do know under the CARES Act that there were hours, there was money set aside for administrative work, which would have been, which should cover Lori's hours too.
I said Lois, I mean Lori, I'm sorry.
I don't know who Lois is, but I mean.
Yeah.
Lois Lane, we need to get her on board.
That's all I can think of. Well, she's a superhero doing all that work she does, so. Um.
Well, at the present time, we have approval, it's, I mean, we wouldn't have final approval on anything frankly, but we've got more or less approval. For the contact tracers and the public health nurse. But as I've said before, the hours for, um, Lori are very non-specific, and I would, that's a whole new expense that's not currently been submitted. And go through the machinations we would be required to do that. Why not just use this money for those hours, extra hours for Lori? There's plenty there to cover it. And, and there's actually more than you need to cover Lori's hours in this grant. And, you know, keep, keep it for other expenses that come along that aren't covered by the CARES Act.
Okay, because I was under the impression that we didn't really have the CARES Act money, that that was all in flux, so I figured this would help. Um, anything that wasn't covered by that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. The hours by Lori, the three extra hours a week, it's very unlikely that the CARES Act would cover that. So we'll use this money for that instead. But the contact tracer and the nurses' hours, we're very, we're quite confident will be covered by the CARES Act ultimately. So I'm just, that's the bifurcation I'm suggesting. It's, it's just conserving the CARES Act money for the costs that we know will be approved. And then use this extra money for the new thing you wanna do without worrying if the CARES Act wouldn't approve Lori's hours, because you've got it buttoned up with this grant.
Kathy has a question.
Wait a second. Is that it, Kevin? You all set?
Yes.
Great. Um, speaking of the, uh, public hurt, uh, health nurse, do we have a resignation letter from the previous health nurse?
Um, we got emails, and I sent that copy to Kevin, and I have it, and I'm not sure if I sent one to Kathy, but, um, we do have an email from her.
Kevin, do you have that?
I think I have a, um, an email from Deb that's, that gave me the reason why, but Deb, I don't think I have the. Actual email submitted by, uh, by her, no, I don't.
Okay, well, I can, I can forward that to everybody.
Yeah, that'll be helpful that we have that.
Great, because we did, yeah, that'd be good to have. We put it in the file though.
Okay.
And also, because it's a voluntary resignation, it should protect us from any unemployment claims, so it would be important to have that letter.
Okay, Kathy?
Thanks, I'll let me. So, um, a couple of things, just since you just mentioned, um, Claire Walsh, I just wanted to, um, wish her well and thank her for. Her dedication and care and service to our town. She took us through the whole first part of this pandemic. And she did so tirelessly. She did it all different times, at days and hours, and most people in the town never knew that our health nurse. Initially, really only had six hours a week scheduled, and we doubled it to twelve, and. When that surge happened after Thanksgiving, even twelve hours wasn't enough. There was just no way. So I think she, she did the impossible, and she did it with style, and I thank her for how much she cared about the town. It showed in when she spoke about the people who were affected by this virus. There's no question in my mind that every action she took. Was because she cared so deeply, and I thank her for that. And the second thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, over the weekend, in the course of a Zoom call about this. Consortium thing, we also discussed having an emergency operating center, which I think made a lot of sense maybe to have. A phone bank available to people when they start trying to, um, use this link for the page school. I could say, I've actually seen the link, and I see how it works, and I think people are going to need some help by phone sometimes with accessing it, what they need to do. Um, so I know that the council on aging is really great and taking as many calls as they are. I'm sure Lori and the Board of Health is also. There ten to four or five every day. I lose track of how late she stays, but I know she's there all the time, taking calls as much as she can. But I was wondering if we wanted to try, uh, reaching out to our emergency management person, Steve Sargent in the Police Department. About that EOC center, and maybe experiment with a Saturday, um, call center, maybe from like nine to noon or nine to two, and see if. If folks wanna take advantage of this, because once, once we put the link out there and people start trying to progress through it and get signed up for an appointment. I think the questions are gonna start happening. Um, and people might need some assistance, or people might just not, might not know. Is it my turn? Am I, am I in this round, or do I need to wait? You know, I know as a teacher that I'm not up yet, even though I'm a phase two person. It's not my turn yet. Okay, but not everybody knows that, so I thought the idea of a call, some kind of call center. Even temporarily, would probably be a really great endeavor to get working on. That was my thoughts.
Okay, so I, I do know that other, like Georgetown and, um, I think it's Raleigh, those two towns do not have any emergency centers. Operating going on right now. It would just be us doing this, but I think that it's gonna be, you're gonna know that it's for the, right now, it's for the age seventy-five and older. You're gonna know which groups are supposed to be in there, and, um. I, I think we'll do okay. Like I said, we have that cell phone that we can have turned on and have someone be using it. Rather than hooking things up and making more cost to the town.
I just, I guess my point in, in suggesting this is that. I wanna make us as accessible as possible. I know with the town hall closed right now, just Lori by herself. Could very well get overwhelmed. I've already gotten a lot of emails, people asking questions about the consortium. The word is out, and once the link goes up in our town, I truly believe that we will get a lot more interest, questions and calls. Than we realize, and that having a dedicated time spot, perhaps on a Saturday, when people can. Make calls to a deadline that does nothing but answer questions about this, because Lori has other responsibilities too. So, you know, she's taking care of everything, so I thought we could experiment with it. We don't necessarily have to spend a lot of money, but. If it turns out to be useful, at least while we roll through phase two, fine. If it turns out that we do it for two Saturdays and nobody calls, we end it. But I, I thought it was a good idea. I, I think that, um, we should try to push something like that out there, just to have. A place where the only calls going to it are for the vaccine. That's my point. So people can get through, and they know the only thing that is coming to that phone bank are questions about the vaccine, because we don't really have that. We have. So many dedicated employees, but they're also running departments. They're running departments, so they can only take so many calls, and I don't wanna push them. Over the limit, and I feel like if the public is calling and the lines are busy or they can't get through, if they know that on Saturday. They have an, oh, there's a phone bank that they can definitely call to, that might help people, um, be less anxious about the vaccine. About how to get to it, about where it is, wha- what qualifies me, what do I need to bring? Because it's, it's not a real user-friendly link system. It, it's okay if you're very good with computers. I've seen it, so I know what it takes to go through it and get the appointment. But for people that might have, um, concerns or problems doing it on the computer, I think we need to make some. Some effort to have a dedicated phone line that that's all that line handles, the only thing. Even if we just do it for a couple of tries, and if nobody calls, then we know that our departments are handling it all, right? But if we don't do that, and our departments get overwhelmed, then there, we're once again back like after Thanksgiving with the surge. And all the bad stuff that happened, you know, when we couldn't keep up, you know?
I get it. Alright, yeah, so I'm not opposed to the idea. I think you're underestimating the logistics and the costs of what's gonna happen with this. I am all for over-communicating more information than not doing that. That is definitely the preference. But I think the cost and logistics are going to be a real concern on how we do this, where we do this, and how we're gonna staff this. So let me ask, Ed, do you have any questions on this?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Bill, any question for you?
Yeah, I've got a few. Um. So I, I guess the plan is disseminate the information through the town website. Is that correct? In my assumption? Can anybody answer that question for me?
I don't know how.
Which information are you talking about?
Yep.
I'm talking about, now we're, we're part of the consortium. We're now part of these other towns, right?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
That's what I've got it, and, um. How, how? The plan to get the information to the public is to post it on our town website, is, is that my understanding?
Is that how it's gonna happen, Mike?
This is your ball. How do you wanna do it?
Well, I just found out, so I, I mean, I would assume we would put it on town website. We can do a reverse nine-on-one, but we have to have more information. We don't have anything yet as to when. We're doing sign-ups, when vaccines are happening. We don't know yet.
So I would suggest, uh, that we put it on the website initially, that we're now part of this grouping of towns that's gonna be, um, consolidated clinic. I would then do a reverse nine-one-one call to, to disseminate that information, as well as asking for volunteers of any type. Whether you are certified to put a needle in an arm, or if you can just direct people on where to go at these clinics on a Saturday or any other Saturday. At a minimum, and then, uh, as we get more information, we can send out. Additional calls or put more information on the website, but yes, I think, again, oversharing information is the preference here.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, I'm sorry, I'm pretty sure that John, our, um, John Dealfoyle is actually gonna put out a press release about this too.
Right.
I think he's gonna send that email.
Right, so, so the press release, the reverse nine-on-one, the website, all of it at a minimum. Yeah, hold on, Kathy, Bill?
Um, alright, so that, that's good, so. Now the volunteers will do what? They will help set up the appointments. What, what will be the role of the volunteers?
I think there's gonna be several. They're gonna be helping when people are coming into the, um, over to the page school. They're gonna be outside, they're gonna be inside. There's gonna be people who are going to be giving shots, helping with registration. It's gonna be several different things, so.
So I think, I think the idea is that we're trying to get about thirty-five people to volunteer for these clinics. And the, the breakout would be twenty to twenty-five people that can actually do shots, and then ten to fifty people who can help direct. And do more logistics-type information. Hold on, Kathy, I know you wanna talk.
Okay, um, so. I, I just wanna make sure, because, you know, we've been, I've been reading or watching a lot on the TV about how. The, um, the current state plan is, is really, um, inconvenient for a lot of the elderly folks. They're not very computer savvy. They don't own computers, so I wanna make sure that they're not forgotten, that we make, you know. They're a priority, and we figure out beforehand, we don't have the information now, so now's probably a good time to think about. How we're gonna get that information into everyone's hands from nine to ninety. Um, and do we know, do we have an ETA on when this might begin? I know you just got the email, but do you have a gut feeling from conversations you've had?
Orig- originally, I heard that it was gonna be three to four weeks. Before we had a vaccine, but he said it was gonna be the end of this week, right? Is that it, Kathy? We're, it's gonna start, but it's not gonna, uh, I don't think we're gonna be the first ones in. It's gonna be other people hurting me in first.
Right, right.
He did say it was gonna be, but, but when I talked to the, I did, John and I had a meeting with the chief yesterday morning. And it is gonna be something that's gonna last through the summer. Go ahead, Kathy.
Wait, hold on a second here.
What?
There's one person running the meeting here, right? I'm going to tell people when they can talk. I understand people have questions, and I understand people are raising their hands. I will get to the people when I can. There is a discussion happening, and when there's a break, I will allow other people to talk, alright? Kathy, go ahead. Alright, Kathy, go ahead. You're muted.
I know that. I did that for a moment. I don't think there's any reason to get this intense. I just wanted to put out some information before we kind of assume that this information isn't available. First, the clinic has already started at page. They're taking slots on Saturday. Bill O'Neill is correct. You need to be computer savvy because you're gonna have to scan in your medical card. So I had to do that for my mother in Connecticut. I know people who are going to the page clinic, like first responders and things like that, are scanning in their own information and getting appointments. The second thing is on the volunteerism. I'd be more than glad to volunteer, but I probably would guess that you're not gonna be allowed to be inside the site as a volunteer unless you're vaccinated. So I feel like that's kind of like a catch thing like volunteer wise, I could only do something where I wouldn't be in contact with people that are getting, going to the vaccination center because I'm not vaccinated. That would be my sense unless.
Well, you stay eight to ten feet away, you direct people like I would do. I'm not vaccinated, but I'm vol, I'll volunteer to tell people where to go, what line to get into, what they fall into. That's basically what a volunteer would do. Like if you were at the Patriots game, you would say, you go here, you go there.
Well, okay. Yeah, as long as we, we can be there, I'd be glad to do it. And I think it's a, am I muted again? I don't know.
No, you're not.
Oh, no, I'm not. Yeah, so that's great. I just, I just feel like again, I, I agree with Sluckman O'Neill that um for the seventy-five and, and over who are going to be the first ones going there, we have to do whatever we can to assist them in connecting with this link, getting their ID, their Medicare, whatever cards scanned in and ready to go. So whatever we can do, if we need to volunteer through the town hall to help them with that, I'd be glad to do that, having done it already.
Kevin, quickly.
Yes, the um, this is a fascinating conversation, but we're frankly talking about a lot, a lot of things that are not yet organized for the um, for the, for the clinics. Um, the uh eight now nine town consortium does have professionals that are organizing it. And they're going to be coordinating all these things, uh asking for volunteers, asking for folks that are licensed to give vaccinations. By the way, anybody who volunteers at the vaccination sites will be offered um the opportunity to be vaccinated irrespective of where they would otherwise fall in phase one, two or three. So there's no expectation that people would volunteer at these sites and not be vaccinated. They will be offered that. So there is organizational structure coming. And I would suggest to the board, we don't need to sit here and speculate and try to invent this wheel because we are now part of a consortium that is inventing the wheel and will tell us what we need to do at the appropriate time.
Correct. Um, the assumption was that we have a an idea of what number of people we're gonna be looking for to start to get that information out to people that, hey, we're trying to meet these numbers of twenty-five professionals, ten to fifteen volunteers of directing people. So you're right, there's gonna be a lot more direction coming, which is great, but in order to get that information uh and resources in place ahead of time, I think disseminating that information would be prudent to do uh sooner than later. But you're right, we'll be told what to do and when, which is fine by me. Don't get me wrong.
Who, just a question, who is gonna write the uh material for the website, please? We'll get it, we'll get it on the webpage, but who will be writing all that?
It should come from Deb.
From me, I thought it was coming from John.
Well, John's doing a press release, which is fine, but the information as far as uh well, you can probably take most of his press release and use that as a, as a document outline to put on the website.
Correct.
Kevin, is, you agree with that?
He muted himself. Unmute.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, if someone would be kind enough to give me that press release, I don't know that I would necessarily see it. Then I'll ensure that it gets um.
Yeah, it should come out, should come out tomorrow. So if I see it, I'll forward it off the, or Kathy, or if I see it, just forward it off. It's better to get it more than once if he needs to.
Thank you.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, um, two points. Uh, before the grass grows, you better make sure the field is plowed, right? And I, I think that's the point I'm trying to make. Let's before that, you know, we laid down the seed, make sure we have everything in place so we're ready to go with this. And the last question I have is, is there a cost associated with this?
There's, can I answer that? There's no cost for the vaccine, but there is a cost to administer it. So the person who isn't, so um it's administration fee, that, that's what the insurance will charge, but not for the vaccine itself.
Right, so the vaccination is free, the actual administration of the vaccination, the paperwork and all the backend stuff, that's where the insurance gets charged. That's why there's an upload of your insurance card when you're registering for the slot.
Correct.
Okay. Um, so for those folks that unfortunately might not have any insurance, what would that cost be out of pocket? Did, does anyone know?
No, I have no idea. No.
Well, based on what I've heard from some people, it's anywhere from a hundred to two hundred dollars. But that's a guess. That's not accurate. That's just from what I heard from different people being charged different amounts. It could be that much, it could be less. I have no idea, but that's some of the information that's been relayed back to me.
If they get enough volunteers um to do the actual administration and they get enough volunteers to do the staffing for the vaccination centers, there may end up not being any cost to anybody um other than there will need to be a certain amount of professional staff at the vaccination centers. Those people will be paid. But there are hopefully going to be a whole bunch of volunteers who are unpaid. And it, there's every possibility at this point, not a certainty, but a possibility, that even uninsured people uh will be able to get vaccine for no charge. In fact, I, I can virtually guarantee it because think about the implication, if the only people that could get vaccinated were insured people, we've got somewhere around thirty-five to fifty million Americans that are not insured and we would be condemning them all to not being able to get vaccinated. That's not gonna happen. Again, all the data aren't out yet, but that is not going to happen.
And I can't speak for the fifty million Americans, but I want to make sure if there's anyone in Groveland that's in that position that somehow this uh, uh, some kind of safety net established for these people. Um, whether it be through the federal government, the state government or something that they don't fall through the cracks. So that was my last point.
Ed, anything else you want to add?
Me?
Wait, uh, wait till everything is spelled out. We gotta wait our turn and it sounds like everything will uh, will, will work out okay.
Well, I mean, there's work to be done. It's not, hope is not a strategy. I think that's a famous line, right? There's excellent work in logistics that needs to be done. So as long as we stay on top of the work and logistics about what we need to have in place and the requirements and we're ready to go when someone tells us to jump, then I think everything will be okay. But there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in the background. And I think again, disseminating as much information as possible is the relevant course to go, right? More information is better than no information. So even if you're over-killing with information and people are just not reading it or adhering to it, at least they're getting it, right? So not getting information and people asking me, Mike, what are we doing? How come I can't get vaccinated? What's going on with Groveland? What's going on with these other towns? How come I'm reading this in a Newburyport news? How come we're not part of this? You know, we're getting a lot of questions about this stuff and we don't have a lot of answers. So this is why more information is better than no information. Agreed?
Agreed. And the other thing, the other point I would make.
Go ahead, Ed.
No, I'll strike that.
Alright, Bill?
I'd say the other point I would, I, I would strongly make is, is don't be afraid to reach out. You know, for any kind of help, assistance, anything. Um, we're all in this together. We've all got to pull the rope in the same direction. So don't be shy.
So um Kathy, you have anything else?
No, I already said everything.
I don't think Jason is on anymore. So given the situation of the health department um with the resignation, Deb, you're okay with the way things are going right now? You have uh everything?
Ev- everything's been going fine so far. I mean, are we are, everything's been um we've had, have less cases right now. We have two contact tracers who are being paid. We have a third person on call if we do need another person. So we're doing okay right now. And we have submitted resume, well, we have resumes that have been submitted, but we also um asked Catherine to put the ad in the um Eagle Tribune for Sunday, just, just on a Sunday and also to put it, place it on Indeed. Because not everybody checks the town website nor do they always check M A, check the M N A. So that's it for now.
Uh, I guess the concern is, you know, this is something that needs to be filled ASAP, obviously, so.
I know, but we also want to have someone who's gonna be in there that we're gonna keep instead of just filling holes here and there. So right now we're, we're doing okay. So if we do have to fill, we do have somebody who actually asks, but we also don't have the money for that person right now. So um we're, we're ho, we're holding our own right now and we're hoping to once we get this ad into Indeed, we'll be getting more, more resumes hopefully.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything else? Okay. Well, as usual, we're here to help, so you need something from us. You let us know. I mean, we're, we're volunteers. I mean, money's kind of hard to come by, but if we can find some nuggets under a cushion somewhere, we'll, we'll do it. So whatever we can do, we're, we're all in this together. So let's make a, a sort of effort to work together and get some, some more pro, positive progress going. Alright, um, thanks Deb. I think that's it for the, yeah, for the COVID discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, so uh budget's probably gonna take a few minutes. So let's go over to uh votes of the board, affordable housing, resale notice for thirty-five Groveland Commons Way. So I saw a few emails coming back and forth with Rebecca and she is still on, thank God, and with Kevin. And I think I understand what we need to do here is, um, I guess we have, I don't know if it's the right terminology, first right of refusal to buy land or to buy that property, which we typically don't do. Um, but we can have that discussion and then the next part B of that is um how to work with the universal deed writer on all forty B projects, uh which is a more I guess comprehensive and stronger writer for those types of properties. Um, I'm gonna put Rebecca on the spot here and ask her to add anything uh that I might have messed up on that.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no, you did not mess up per se. Uh, the, the property over at Groveland Common Ways is actually not a first rate of refusal. Uh, but there is an opportunity for the town to purchase the property if they would so choose so. Um, but again, you would actually be purchasing the property and then taking over its affordability status. So while this particular property will remain as part of the universal deed writer uh affordable in perpetuity, it is recommended that the town does not take over its affordability. Just because it's already remained that status. So we're not losing any units on the subsidized housing inventory. We're still maintaining it and we're still watching it. And then in terms of the second statement, you are correct. The universal deed writer will protect future units such as the ones on Savory Lane off of Main Street that currently do not have that type of restriction that would allow for those units to be maintained in perpetuity. So uh, yes, uh you are correcting your statement, but we do not have the first rate of refusal on those uh, on the Groveland Common unit.
So we just, we would just need the, the vote not to purchase it.
That is correct. And then also to allow Chappa to make sure that the three lane uh units do have a universal deed.
Okay, so let's do this in two parts then. So can we, does everybody, anybody have any questions for Rebecca? I think it's pretty straightforward, at least for the, the part A. Kathy, any questions? Ed, any questions?
No.
Bill, any questions? Jason's back on, at least by phone. Jason, any questions?
No.
Ah, there he is. Alright, so can we get a motion to not purchase the the affordable housing lot that Rebecca referred to?
I'll make a motion to not purchase thirty-five Groveland Commons Way to not exercise our right under the thirty-day rule, whatever it is.
Second.
Alright, you have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Put your hands up, please. Okay. Alright, we're gonna roll call. Mike, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ed? Ed? Alright, yes, Jason?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Fantastic. Uh, part B in that would be uh for the board to selectmen to authorize Chappa to work with all the homeowners at the two forty B developments to switch to a stronger universal deed writer that Rebecca talked about. Anybody have any other questions on that? Bill?
No.
Ed?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Jason?
No.
Right. Someone wanna make a motion then?
I'll make a motion where you are.
Alright, so Ed made a motion for passage. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, a motion in a second. We'll roll call. Mike, yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Fantastic. Rebecca, anything else you need from us on that?
No, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. You're on mute, Kevin. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Unmuted.
There you go.
Here?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Um, Rebecca, will you notify the um, um, the appropriate parties of the board vote? Or I, or is there something you need uh my office to generate?
No, I will just record the vote and then I will let them know of such.
Okay, great. Thanks so much and thanks for being on the call.
Always. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we are going to go back to budget discussions. I don't think this will take a whole lot of time. Does anybody have any questions or have any time to start to review the budget proposal that Kevin had given to us at the last meeting? Kathy?
Okay, so we received the budget request and we had one cover sheet. But I didn't see like the omnibus that we normally have at the town meeting yet. So I was waiting on that. And I just wanted to remind you that there was that little mistake on that cover page between the Essex Tech and the Whittier assessment. That's still not corrected on that cover page. So since it's in the budget book, it should probably get corrected. Remember, they don't have a name. They have the wrong name on the assessment and then one number is just there, but that's really the Essex Tech assessment, the first page in, in the thing.
Yeah, I, I, that page hasn't been corrected yet. We're still waiting. Um, once the schools submit their budgets, we've got um, one budget, but we don't have Essex Aggie yet and we don't have Whittier yet. So once they submit their budgets, I'll recompute that whole page for purposes of balancing it, making sure the budget is balanced and submitted. And that's when you'll see a new, a new one of those. I did send out, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I was kind of thinking of, we should have a copy of like last year's Excel omnibus sheet. You know what I mean? So you don't have to put all that in. I know it exists. The Finance Board probably has it. People have it. If you don't have access to it, it's, it's all set up with the prior years and you just have to dump off one prior year and add the new year. And then you put down the, the Finance Director Recommendation on the Finance Board. I mean, that's kind of what we've been doing. You know, whether it's best or the worst, but you shouldn't have to recreate that sheet because all of those line items and all those budgets are already in that template.
Great, thank you.
It, it exists, like maybe Ruth has it. I have an older one. I don't think I have last year's.
No, I, I have it.
Do you know when you expect to get those budgets from Essex Aggie and, and Whittier?
Um, I'll be having a conversation. I've already had two or three conversations with the business manager for Whittier and um she and I are scheduled to talk tomorrow. And we think we'll get a pretty preliminary number, but the school committee won't vote that actual budget till March. Um, Essex Aggie, um, I've sent an email and a phone message to the budget, I, I'm sorry, to the business manager. Um Essex Aggie, um I've sent an email and a phone message to the budget, I'm sorry, to the business manager there. But I have not yet had a response, so I'm gonna have to. Kind of figure out how to get somebody over there to respond to me. I do know that they won't produce their budget so much either, but all I'm trying to do at this point is get an approximation. Uh for the budget. Um, so I've got one. Uh tune it up tomorrow and I don't have the other yet, but hopefully we'll get some response from them.
Okay, if you need help with the uh the document that Kathy's talking about, let me know and I can reach out to Ruth or. Or somebody else, Kathy?
Um, just a quick thing on the Essex Tech, if I remember right. They don't give us a budget till the fall. I mean, it's horrible because we're not really a member, member, a voting member, like on their board. So, I think we just roll with whatever number we have for this year. And unless they tell you our students are going down, we just wait. That's why we have extra in there this year, because we didn't get a final assessment, I think, until the fall. I'm pretty sure about that. I know, it's bad.
I remember.
Yeah, the only good part is that we don't send that many students there, so it's usually not. That big an impact, so I think they tend, we tend to put it up a little bit too high. You know?
I think it, it stays pretty consistent from year to year, um so even if you use last year's number as a guideline, that's. And maybe throw in another student or something, that's probably a um feasible approach.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, I, I intend to have a conversation with their business manager and get all this much more specific than that.
Yeah.
While I do appreciate that input, um we can't balance the municipal budget. Sort of supposing what the numbers might be. I'm gonna have that, I've gotta have that business manager be very, very specific. And if they're not returning my call or email right now, you can bet your bottom dollar, I'll be talking to somebody in the next forty-eight hours. They'll talk to us.
Okay, so we, we, we can expect in the next, by the next, one second, Ed, by the next meeting that we should have those numbers, at least in theory. Uh placed into that document, okay, that's good.
Absolutely.
Ed, Ed, question?
Yeah, question for Kevin, um I noticed in your packet, uh you, you appear to be eliminating the. Uh clear gov uh software.
That's correct.
Which would save us the fourteen thousand, who's a friendly, a, a lot of uh. Uh, a lot of department heads had complained about it last year. So that, that seems like a, a, the good way to go.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
None at this time, but uh Kevin, I, I, I have the um. I know I have the Excel spreadsheet from probably two or three years in a row. So if you, you know, you can't find it, let me know. And I wouldn't dump any years, just keep adding rows and columns and just keep. You know, make it, someday it'll make a nice history, you know, when you can look back and, and. It's always a good thing.
Appreciate the help, thanks.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I've gone through, maybe this was Sunday or Saturday, I think I've gone through the first six tabs. Um, I do have a couple of questions on some of the things, but uh I guess what I'll do is. Uh circle some things and then as we get closer into a little bit more refining, like. What people have actual questions on as related to this uh folder that I love getting every year, by the way. Um, then we can start to have a, a longer discussion and maybe actually. Do an off-meeting night, probably by Zoom, of anything specific that comes across with these budget pages, so. Um, I would ask that everyone spends a little bit of time, I know we're all busy with. Full-time jobs and everything else going on in the world, but do spend a little bit of time kind of looking through this, if not. You know, twenty minutes a day or a couple hours on the weekend to get an idea if things look right to you, if you have any questions, if you wanna question. Uh a particular budget or increase or a line item or something like that, so we can then have. Uh a meaningful discussion on what the budget looks like next year. Sound good?
If, if it, uh if it works for the board. Um, if all or any of you. Who have particular budgets, you might have one, you might have fifteen, I don't know, but whatever concerns you have, if you could just shoot me an email. And then I'll work with Mike to um make sure that the night you want to discuss those budgets. That I've got the department head concerned, because a lot of the budgets. Um, there's no, there's nothing new in them and you may not want to spend the time reviewing those, because there's really nothing new.
Right.
There's a number of other budgets where there are some new things happening. And you may want to focus attention on those, so if you'd be kind enough to just shoot me an email and say which ones you're interested in. Um, I'll get a list prepared and then work with the chairman to make sure we've got the right people at the meeting to answer your questions, because. I don't want to um. Be so arrogant as to suggest I could answer all your questions, I probably can't, so I want to be sure we got the right department heads here for you.
Yeah, that's typically how we do things um in the past is we'll, we'll have questions on a particular department and then we'll bring them in for a deeper discussion. Especially something that has a sizable increase, and that's really what I'm going through, is looking through for sizable increases or different changes. Um that I want to talk about, so uh that is my plan to at least come up with a narrowed down shortlist, I know most of this is going to be either. Um, a very small increase or level funded for next year because of the situation. Um, so there shouldn't be a whole lot of those, but as far as increases go. Um, I do see a couple of them initially that I want to have further discussion on, so we can start with those and. Kind of go from there, everyone agree with that, sound good? Bill?
Yeah, um, back to Kevin, if um, the sooner I can get that Excel. Spreadsheet back from you, the one that Kathy was talking about, because. I typically don't use the book other than for reference, I put some formulas in there and then I. I can laser focus on the, the things that jump out either up or down year over year. And then I can, I, then I use my book for reference and say, okay, what is this?
Um, now, so I will know what to get you. I'm not sure what you're describing, because Kathy was describing, the document she was describing is the one I've already sent to you folks. And just need to make a couple corrections on, that's the budgeting, uh the balancing formula, if you will, it compares revenues with expenses.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find it for you and I'll send it to you.
Okay, thanks, Bill, that would be good.
Kevin, I was mentioning the um, the line by line that we bring to town meeting, that's what he's referring to.
Okay, you're talking about, yeah, you're talking about the big omnibus article?
Yes.
Okay, we don't get that ready, that doesn't get prepared for another probably three or four weeks, because. That document that goes to town meeting gets prepared as part of the warrant, I've got that. And I'm dumping numbers in, in it as they appear, but that's got the school budget in it. The Whittier bu- the Penticat budget, the Whittier budget, it's got, put it this way, it's got a lot of, a lot of numbers in it that we don't have yet. Uh because that's what actually gets voted on at town meeting. Now, the budgets for all of the departments, I can certainly give you that. Um, so of that great big Warren article, I can give you nine tenths of it. But there's pieces of it I can't give you, because I don't have them.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know that, we're used to that and, and, and we're used to the, it being, you know, a fluid document. When we get it at first, we know that's not the, 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 set in stone yet, it's going to change, but it gives us. Uh, a chance to begin to start wrapping our heads around major shifts up or down that we can now. But, you know, focus on.
No problem, I'll pull that together this week and uh, and get it to the board by email, probably by the end of the week or so.
Awesome.
Great.
Any other questions for Kevin on the budget? No, okay, great, um, so let's move over to Finance Director time, Kevin, anything else you need to add?
Just a couple of quick things, um. I wanted to let you know that um, the capital budget is basically done, there were. I had a department head meeting today, I went through with all the department heads and. Um, there was some money appropriated for this year that Kathy actually mentioned to me, thank you. And I started asking some questions and uh came to find out that there was a little bit of confusion. Uh, the library, uh bow and bay windows and roof is actually funded this year. And I thought they needed to request it for next year and ditto on the concrete steps for Town Hall, which is funded for this year already, so. Now what I'm gonna be able to do is tomorrow I'll be able to get that budget finalized and uh look for that by email. Um, the actual, that'll be the cover spreadsheet. The actual um backup documentation, um which is about an inch thick. Catherine copied it all today and if um we can either mail it to you or you can pick it up at Town Hall. But it, it'll be ready by, let's say, close of business tomorrow. Well, actually not tomorrow, we're closed tomorrow, that's right, we're having a snowstorm, all I gotta do is look out the window here. Um, let's say by close of business Wednesday, uh the capital budget will be already for you. Now, I can email you the spreadsheet, but I can't email you all the backup, because it's, it's literally an inch thick, it's hundreds of pages. But we've already copied it for you, so do you want to swing by Town Hall and pick it up, or would you prefer we mail it to you?
I prefer to swing by and pick it up, uh with something like that, it's gonna be easier to read in paper, even though I hate wasting the paper on it.
Okay, I'll tell you what, Catherine will have the spreadsheet, I, I'll actually finish that probably tomorrow morning. Will, she'll get it on Wednesday, so if you'd like her to mail it to you, just call and ask her to mail it. Uh, if you're gonna stop by, then just do that and she'll have them, okay?
Okay.
Um, the next thing, the operating budget summary message, I sent that out to you over the weekend by email. I hope everybody got that, because that goes through everything in the budget that's changing. That's of any significant value beyond the two percent. Um, is all discussed in that, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a quick highlight. Uh, that's exactly what I called it, budgetary highlights, so you can get a real quick idea of what's changing in the budget and why, and I hope that's a real useful guide for you. Um, and if you didn't get that by email, please let me know and I'll resend it. That goes in tab one of your budget book. And the last thing, the um. I don't actually have, know the name of the legislation, but the continuation of the CARES Act. That the Congress passed in December had a provision in it. Which allowed businesses and governments to extend the eighty hours of COVID paid leave time. For employees who have to be out of work due to COVID exposure. Between January one and April one. Now, the original CARES Act eighty hour provision expired on December thirty-first. But employers can continue it for another three months. Any employee who's taken any of the eighty, eighty hours can only get the balance up to eighty. Any employee who hasn't taken any time off for COVID is now eligible to take time off and have it be paid. But only if you vote to extend it for January one through April one. I asked the department heads today if that would be something of value to them and two or three people indicated that they. Have employees with COVID exposure going on right now. And so we would recommend to the board that you take that vote to extend the eighty hours of COVID exposure compensated time. Uh for the next three months, as a practical matter, it means you're doing it for the month of February and March, because January's already passed. So if it pleased the board, if you take that vote, um now then I can notify everybody tomorrow morning, well, again, Wednesday morning.
What would be the wording for this vote?
Um, I don't have the exact name of the act that passed in December, and I apologize, but I would suggest just say. Um, that the board authorized the continuation of the eighty hours of compensated COVID. Um, sickness leave. Authorized by the CARES Act and rea- reauthorized in December.
So extend the eighty hours of, eighty hours of COVID-related sick leave?
COVID-related sick pay.
Sick pay. Okay, so we'll just make a motion to extend the eighty hours of COVID-related sick pay. As approved by the governor's more recent order, is that it?
No, it's a, a, as, as authorized by federal legislation.
Okay, I'll say, okay.
Extended to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, right?
Correct, thank you.
Legislation.
You got it?
Okay, I think I got it, okay, send it to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. So I'll make a motion to extend eighty hours of COVID sick pay as authorized by federal legislation. Extended to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, alright, I have a motion in a second, I'm hoping we have any further discussion, so we're gonna roll call. Mike, yes, Bill?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
There he is, alright, anything else, Kevin?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move over to Selectment time, I don't have anything this week, um Kathy, anything?
Um, just two thoughts for a future, one for a future agenda, well, both really, one is um. To try to make our um town hall a little more accessible, because it seems like. Uh, we're coming up on almost one year with the town hall closed to the public. And to maybe have some conversations with the people that are working in the town hall to assess their comfort level. With allowing people to make an appointment and perhaps meet in the center room with a plastic shield and. Because I did run into someone on the front steps who wanted to just get a better understanding of whether she needed an abatement or not. And sometimes people want that face to face, um. So I wanted to get a sense from, from the employees inside the town hall as to the level of comfort with just um. An appointment basis, so.
Are most of them doing that already?
Uh, no, I, not necessarily, we haven't really posted, the person that came on the steps said they weren't even aware that we were closed to the public. I know, right, but you, you wouldn't believe, some people just don't know, I don't know. So I thought with you, as you said, and more information is always better, we should come out with a succinct. Easy statement about what kind of access people have to the town hall. But I didn't want to just come up with it on our own without first checking with the folks working in the town hall to make sure that everybody's okay with it. They would have to log the person's name in, temperature scan and their phone number right now, still for tracing purposes, I would guess, right? Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think you would find the people in Town Hall universally opposed to the idea of allowing the public in. Particularly since the board is currently, your vote currently is that it is closed to the public. Now, we offer Zoom calls, we offer phone calls, uh full consultation with people, just like we're doing right now. But we do not, per the board's order, we do not allow non-paid staff, non-volunteers. Uh who are members of boards and committees are not allowed in the building. There are workers that have to be allowed, the I T folks, but that's it. Unless the board changes your vote. Um, but I don't think you, I don't think you'd find a lot of support among the staff for more exposure than they're already experiencing.
Right, and that's part of the discussion that we had with that Emergency Call Center was. We're gonna bring more people into Town Hall to do this call center, which I like the call center, but. How are we gonna staff it, how are we gonna pay for it, where's it gonna be managed, because we don't want to bring more people in the town hall, right? Because we have a pretty good bubble there, which is why we closed it, so Kathy?
Well, we spoke about putting the call center under the police dispatch and using people there for that, so I guess. The second thought, if we can't um even consider allowing the public in the building, um I feel that um. We should have spread across some of the weekdays, the administrative coordinator hours like nine to twelve, so there's somebody. To grab those calls of people who are just trying to figure out what they need to do, because not everybody is so digital on the computer. With Zoom and Google, and I feel that, again, we're coming up on a one-year mark of not providing face-to-face. Customer contact and the main function of that town hall is customer service.
The phones still work, right, and emails still work, so.
Well, we don't have, right now, when we first hired the administrative coordinator position, when we, when we discussed it, we talked about having like hours. You know, like nine to twelve Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so that there would be a, something there answering calls. Of people who are trying to reach us or just find out what they need to do, and I just feel that we don't have that. Covered right now at all.
So, I have a problem with trying to direct people in Town Hall that they have to. Adjust their comfort level with meeting people either in Town Hall. Um, or in the meeting room, if they want to do it and they feel comfortable meeting outside. Uh with plenty of distance to answer questions, that's up to them, I'm not gonna direct them what they have to do. But it's up to them to decide how they want to schedule that time, they can't, I'm not gonna tell. The, the, the Planning Board or the Board of Health that they need to meet with people in a room inside, that's just, that's unacceptable.
Okay, well, then the second thing is, can we post the hours for the, for the administrative coordinator? For the assessor's office on the front door and on the website, so that people know when they can call if they're trying to call somebody. I don't know that all of our hour posts are up there, I know that some of the hours have changed. Perhaps with the new hires and I just feel that we need to get this information out there and updated, everybody's hours and days should be posted.
I think you'll find that they are posted on the front door, the hours of the offices are posted. I think you'll find that they are posted on the front door. The hours of the offices are posted. I don't think. Um, the hours of the administrative coordinator are posted, because we leave those flexible, flexible purposefully. Um, in order to respond to needs like, one day last week, she did all the budget books and. I think she spent most of one day just doing nothing but preparing all the budget books. Um, so we've been fairly flexible, but if it's the board's wish, that you'd want to have some designated, uh, dedicated hours. When the public could call and we would publish, we could certainly arrange that for you. That that's not a problem.
Yes, I think that would be a step, a good step in the right direction, because I feel that um, based on some of the feedback I've gotten from folks and emails. Um, that they're confused as to how to get in touch with the board, where, when to get in touch, who to call. And I, that the administrative coordinator position prior to Catherine was always that position. That was the hub for those calls. To come to and that kind of the jack of all trades. Oftentimes, you know, the predecessors would dispatch the calls off to another department. But they would initially assess the call and say, oh, you want to talk to this person. And sometimes it would be for the Board of Selectmen and they would just take a note and let the chairman know that, you know, somebody had a concern. So that's all. I just feel like, wha, whatever we can do to, to make access to your town government. As open as possible without obviously endangering anybody's health. I think we need to just kind of step it up a little bit.
Now, just so the board, just so the board is aware, before you consider this, um, and I think it's a fine idea, but. You, the administrative coordinator is already restricted to nineteen hours a week. You know, I've spoken to you repeatedly about that being inadequate. So if you're going to add duties, i.e., now you're gonna have her tied up on the phone for X amount of time taking calls from the public. You cannot reasonably expect that she can accomplish that within the confines of the current nineteen hours. That's already not enough hours.
Right, I guess, I I, and I agree, you know, having more access. Controlled access, I guess, is is good, but the phones work in Town Hall. Voicemail goes to email, right? So everyone that works in Town Hall is reachable, maybe not exactly at that second that you're calling, but the message does get sent over. So, I mean, why do we have phones and email if people aren't being reached? I mean, I'm getting email from people that are finding my information on the website. Either by phone or email, so.
Yes.
Uh, I don't know that putting that burden on Catherine, who I'm sure is already answering phones anyways during her day. I- is necessary to say that, you know, from Wednesday from nine to twelve, she's gonna sit there and answer everyone's calls and direct them to the right department. I ju, I don't know that that's a appropriate use of time.
Let me just, let me just say one thing, is that when we envisioned this job, the duties were not just to assist the finance director. They were for the administrative coordinator for the Board of Selectmen. And part of it was exactly that, to be there when we're not there and be fielding those calls and taking those, that information. And that's not happening, to the best of my knowledge. And and I don't see how it can happen unless we have some kind of a structure there. I don't even know what days Catherine worked or hours. I know she has nineteen hours. I know she does a lot of work. I, but I don't know what days. I don't know what days I can call her on. I absolutely don't. Well, I know Monday, Monday, if we have a meeting, yeah, I can find her at the town hall. But beyond that, I feel that every other employee in the town has a schedule.
Yeah, but as Kevin directed to say, we keep it flexible based on the needs of the week. So if she needs to be in in Town Hall Monday for seven hours, and she is, and she only needs to be there for three hours, then she is. So there's other stuff during the week that comes up that she can focus on. That's part of the reason that I am managing the Zoom call. Along with my other computer that has my notes on it, along with my phone, along with my notebook, and along with my, my packet of budget stuff, right? So we can not waste her hours on stuff that she doesn't need to be on. So I I don't, I don't know where the dis, the disconnect is. I mean, I'm happy to to try and coordinate more information, but people have no, no difficulty contacting me on email and phone. I don't know that anyone has ever told me they left a message for me at Town Hall and I never got it.
Well, basically then, we don't need an administrative coordinator for the Board of Selectmen, so she's primarily an executive assistant to the financial director. So we've changed the job. I guess I'm just wondering what the job is. That's all. So, I mean, I think everybody else in Town Hall has a schedule, has hours that are posted. I think you could allow flexibility on the Monday hours for our meetings, but I don't see why. There shouldn't be some regular hours posted on like Tuesday or Wednesday that are always there. That's all.
All right, so maybe we make this an agenda item for next meeting that we can have a discussion on. Anything else as far as selectman time?
Um, no, I'm glad we're, we're part of the consortium. I think it's a great step. I'm really excited about that.
Okay, Ed, anything for selectman time?
Uh, no.
Bill, anything for selectman time?
Uh, not anymore. I'm gonna save the rest of my energy to shovel snow.
Okay.
Just the rest of you do too.
Jason, I know you're out and about. Do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Uh, Jason, I did get your email on notes on the budget. I did not read it, but I do have it, so I'll save that for next week.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, uh. All right, so next up we have this correspondence, which is. resignation of James Scanlon from the Finance Board effective one twenty twenty-one. And I think that concludes our meeting, which is under two hours I might add, whi, which is uh, pretty, pretty good. So, um, on just a quick note, um, again, Town Hall is closed tomorrow. I expect that. Most of the day is gonna be just a white-out disaster and people are gonna be cleaning up and having people on the road didn't make sense. So most people will be reached, be able to be reached by email or by phone. It is going to be delayed, so if you have any questions, do be patient with people. Uh, because most are gonna be working remotely. And then, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn at seven twelve?
Motion to adjourn the meeting at seven twelve.
Second.
Second, all right, we're gonna roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Mike, yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You're well, everyone. Good night.